To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for attending this morning. First item on the agenda, approval of minutes.
Six.
We have motion in a second to approve the minutes as submitted. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bills. Any questions on the bills?
No, I'll move to approve minutes in a second.
We have a motion and a second. I did have a question on the surest department. Got a payment for, it says magazines for like twenty... Three Smith and Wesson magazines. Or is it three Smith and Wesson?
Disconnected. Slash.
Slash, six magazines. Gotcha.
So it was a gun and a...
Yep, yep.
Yeah, the slash.
I missed the slash in there. Okay, perfect. It's the only thing that jumped out at me.
You're wondering why they can get that so much?
Well, yeah, unless they really had ammo in them. Ammo's very expensive, but... Alright, any other questions on the payment of the bills?
There is one on the highway department that will have a motion on later also.
Okay. If not, roll call.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightpon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Rip.
Aye.
Uh, the financial report. Any question on the financials?
Very good, Mr. Page.
We just have to do some figuring to transfer money to the LUC, whereas everything else is... Good, yeah.
I don't make motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a second on the financials. Roll call, please.
Lightpon?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rip.
Aye.
Approval of the agenda, any changes to the agenda? Talking with Candy, who would like to have a discussion on the 2022 budget. I will put that at the end of new business, if that's okay with everybody.
Move to approve the amended agenda.
Six.
Moved and seconded to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Sarah, extension agent report.
Alright, we just wanted to give you guys a little update on what we've got going on. And then after that, you can see, I got somebody with me today, he'll like to the grocery as well. But coming up in June, we've got a really busy month. We got a, we have a couple of classes this week. We've got a Home Alone Are You Ready class, which is completely full. That one's tomorrow for youth in our, in our area, nine to twelve years old. So we've got a lot of partners coming into, we've got the police department, fire department, health unit, and others coming in. Bill's got an ATV safety class on Thursday, which is full. That'll be out at the Peterson Arena. We have participants from Ramsey County participating in the district communication arts contest, which is this Thursday in Canoo. So we're excited for them to participate. And then winners will move on to the state fair on July 25th. Our shotgun instruction starts June 7th. We have 25 participants participating in that. And our 4-H farm visits will be happening June 10th and 11th. And we'll be visiting 16 farms in the Ramsey County area, so we're excited about that. Mini camps, we've got many 4-H mini camps beginning in Mar- or June. We have one in May, which was successfully led by Sherri Frith. We were excited to have her, she did a great job. We've got a career exploration at LRSC for our older 4-Hers. Teen cuisine, a cooking, kind of a little mini cooking camp. We've got a sewing camp and a clover book camp coming up this month. Our horse show will be out at the Peterson Arena on June 23rd. We're praying for no rain that day, even though we would like some rain. Our livestock show is starting on June 25th with our small animals and pets. And our large livestock show will be June 26th, that will happen at the Peterson Arena. There will also be a celebration for Bill Hodes' retirement at noon on June 26th. So that'll be during our large livestock show. So that is open to anybody. That's being put on by our fair board. We do have a large amount of our older 4-Hers, they'll be at the Devil's Run concession stand this weekend. It's gonna be, sounds like a nice weekend. So if you're out and about, if you want to support our 4-Hers, they're looking to attend some leadership events coming up in the next coming years. We have two of our older 4-Hers attending the Extension Youth Conference, which is on the NDSU campus. And that's exciting for them, as they're going to be learning some leadership, or be participating in some leadership opportunities. And then finally, we have a small boar rifle team competing at the National Shooting Sports Competition in Grand Island, Nebraska, June 21st through the 25th. So Casey Steinhaus, Jacob and Hannah Vogan, Cassandra Christensen, they're being coached by Rick Jorderson. They've been practicing like crazy. So we wish them well at the end of this month. And then if you haven't already found out, Bill Hodes is retiring. Here is his... You guys want to get that in your calendars? We have a big retirement party for him, Jill and I first. That'll be here at the armory. So if you want to get that on your calendars, everyone is invited for that.
All I say is six. As you can see, our office is very busy. I think they made a commitment to try to get all this stuck into a month before I leave. I'm pretty sure that's what happened. But I'm here to, I'll leave my formal letter of retirement today. And moly, moly, zip doesn't pass. One last comment. Sarah said we hope for no rain at the horse show. We really do need some rain. I hope that horse show gets canceled four times, because we do need some rain. It don't take you long to drive on the countryside and see just how poor a lot of this crop is. You know, about two weeks ago, we were lucky and there was a streak, kind of went from Churchus Berry to kind of west of Edmore to McComb that got near an inch. And the rest of the county, then the next day or two, they ended up getting like thirty to fifty hundreds. And you can tell the difference. That inch made a big difference, but it's still not a good difference. But yeah, it's gonna be a, quite a year. And of course, along with that, as pastors, as ednose, nothing there to speak of unless you have to be in that waiting spot. And there was a lot of that going on. The other thing with that, water's gonna be a problem this year for all our pastors. You know, blue green algae, your water's way down, and ednos, that as well, they're... It'll be a challenge in here. We keep feeding our livestock, and then we run out of feed. And then we don't get feed for this next year. And it's gonna be a challenge. It'll be a challenge. But lastly, I'd like to thank you very much for putting up with me for the last seventeen years. It's been a pleasure for me to deal with you and with our community. It's been an awesome time. Thank you. I'm not much up on all these miserable retirement things they got coming up. Well, we didn't give you one last week. It's like, eaters, it's like they're trying to get rid of me. So I guess I'll say shalom, or shalom. Take care.
Bill?
Sounds like you run away.
You can't run away yet. And while I have both you and Sarah in the, in the building, and you're, certainly want to extend our thank you to you for your seventeen years of continued dedication to the citizens around De County. And working with you has been a joy and a pleasure. And one thing about the drought and the livestock, the state does have that disaster water supply for livestock producers. It is a cost share program. And hopefully, some producers in our area are able to take advantage of that water. Vitaly important for those animals. And they've been taking applications and getting them out as soon as possible down there. They've had a bundle of them. I know they're running through their money as, pretty quickly, but I think it's...
It becomes a big challenge, because if you got those pastures that doesn't have access to well or groundwater or something, you know, you're gonna have to haul water. And that's gonna be a full-time job. But that's what's chosen to do.
Yeah, so...
Try to buy a well bigger. Yeah, well, yeah.
That's a well deeper, it helps the water possible.
The other thing would be is have you, the two of you, been discussing, you're filling your position with NDSU at all?
We talked about it, but like extensions van over the past...
Over the years, yeah.
I am, my speculation would be, they can't firmly move forward until it's been... Even though we've got our name on the list, because I announced it early. So we're on a list. But I think there's seven counties that's looking for people yet. I am hoping that you have somebody here by Christmas time, would be my hope. You know, the process takes six weeks straight, two months kind of, and depending on... So that's my hope. I would really be happy if it was real there.
I know, there was a little bit of a fire, or hiring freeze with NDSU. And there are a lot of counties that have agents for quite some time. So those definitely take precedence over us. And because we already have an agent here, which is myself, there are a lot of counties that don't have any agents. And of course, they take precedence over us. So unfortunately, like Bill said, probably Christmas is what we're hoping.
I'll tell you this, you guys are in good hands with your office. Just completely outstanding. Fun people to work with, and keeps you really busy. But we'll hope for the best.
Yeah, again, thank you.
You're welcome. I haven't cried yet, but I could feel this feeling starting to come to me.
Sarah, anything else?
No. You have any questions for us? Always let us know.
So we have county tax equalization at 8:30. Kevin, can you run the numbers up in fifteen minutes?
I'll try.
Alright, turn down the agenda to Kevin's side.
Start off with projects we got going out, and the guys are still fixing soft spots. Probably doing that for a little week or two. We did get that culvert in the Peterson Arena, so that's all done now. The weight limits are all off on all the roads. I'm sure you're aware of that, to bring it up. And then we finally did get the hydraulic studies for bridges that are removed next year. So I ordered the culverts for three different bridges. Two of them up in the furthest northwest corner. One's on the Cavalier County line, and one's on the Tower County line. So they're way up in there. But each one of them was $24,515 for the culverts, seventy cents. And then there's one just north of Lawson Jones, that'll cost $6,269.72. And then I did order one culvert for Ramsey County AD, and that's $2,032.37. So those are ordered now, but I'd still like a motion to pay to go ahead and order them.
Move to approve. Six.
We have a motion in a second to pay for the culverts on, for the highway department. And that's the, among Kevin, 57, 433, 49.
Correct.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, we're paying that, roll call.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lightpon?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rip.
Aye.
And just to explain, we're taking out two other bridges. One is by Colhagan, that hardly ever gets used, not even for deer hunting or anything. And one by Ned Schneider. Ned Schneider hasn't been alive for years, but that's close to where he used to live. And that one is closed right now, because it's not safe to pass. So if we leave him there, we get inspected every year by the bridge inspection crew. So it's like, I don't know, what is it, three, four thousand dollars to inspect them. So we're just gonna tear them out this year. And if we need to put culverts back in, we'll do that next year. Does that make sense? Rather than have them inspected again? We still need to talk to those people that live up there to see if they need to be replaced at all. One of them, that Colhagan Bridge may not have to be replaced at all, because it doesn't go anyplace. So just so you're aware, there's two that we're tearing out there that we're not gonna replace anything this year. In case you get a phone call or something.
And those are structured quite, quite a bit smaller than what was there before. It's going back in based on what the State Water Commission's announced for flows. So they don't have to be a ten-year flow for a couple of them, and a couple of those fifteen.
So that's another thing to keep in mind, that if we get phone calls, all of them are, all of this, we had six of them hydraulic studies, and every single one of them was smaller than what's there now. But that's what the hydraulic study shows, so legally we're covered.
That is interesting.
Yeah.
A lot of times you see them there too small, based on the hydraulics with the wet cycle that we've been in for the thirty years.
Right.
Yeah. Given that you have a request for an additional, was it three, stream crossings for next year, or is it two?
Two. And then that would be all of the, I'll have to put this, all of the bridges that should be replaced. And they're at fifty, you know, they give a rating between zero and a hundred of how good a shape they're in. And after those two, everything will be above fifty, which isn't bad. I mean, we'll probably have a lot of counties there.
And we still want to continue to go through the State Water Commission for those stream crossing standards?
Since these are our last two, I would say yes.
Okay. Would you like to have KLJ Paul to take a look at those? Comparison of what Steve had done with that International Water Institute hydro water delineation program that they have on their map server versus what the State Water Commission submitted?
Yeah, actually, I forgot about that.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
To see how close, close they were. Because Steve was able to do those six that the State Water Commission took eleven months to do. He did it in about two and a half, three hours, based on that, that software program. And if they're relatively close, it saves a lot of time. If, you know, there's no money involved, you know, the State Water Commission, they do it as a service. You know, if it's properly requested, either through the water board, through a county commission, that type of entity, they'll do them for nothing, but it just takes a long for them to complete it. And, you know, Kevin runs into that timeline delay of ordering equipment and ordering parts and scheduling those things. So if, if that's something that you could do, Paul, is take a look at that. I think that'd be a, a really good, good thing if it works out to be, to be close anyway. Kevin, do we need a motion to go ahead and have the county commission submit those two to the state for stream crossing standards?
We have ones in the past, but that's fine. If that's what we want to do, I'm fine with that. These are our last two, and I can do three bridges, well, depending on the Colhagan and Ned Schneider Bridge. Those two and another one. I do have the study for. So there's three I can do, if we got them combined with... But then that, three and then these two, that's the only five we got left.
How many total bridges do we have left in the county?
It's gonna be about thirty, of bigger.
And those are all ones that probably you're going to be needing bridges, or they need box culverts or something of that age, or if they're shit up.
Yeah, most of them would be bridges. We could probably get five of the box culverts on a couple of them. I should say, some of these are inundated, like the Dian Bridge, for instance, or... There are some that Churchus Berry Penn area that are inundated also, that aren't these small bridges, but they may not come out of them. There's still enough to get inundated today. So they may not come out of the water for years.
Pretty difficult in the grand scheme of things that a county, I mean, I don't think we ever had a ton of bridges compared to some counties, but we're down to thirty bridges. It's pretty darn good.
Over the years, we've probably replaced fifty-five, sixty.
It seems like every year it's three to five, depending on how big they are. You just keep chipping away, and that's a good decision made way back when to get started on it.
So yeah, about thirty, and that includes the inundated one.
It's a lot better than five hundred.
Yeah, well, we've only got like three hundred bridges or something.
Yeah, that's, that's a huge, that's a huge number. Like you said, you gotta inspect them all. So that's a whole lot.
A lot of them are needed, too.
Yeah, yeah, that's just, you know, just topography. They don't, they don't have a choice. At least we do.
Either like a smaller county, Cavalier County, they're, they're built to inspect bridges. It's gonna cost more than ours now. I mean, there's not a lot of bridges in Cavalier County, but that's just the way... We've gotten rid of them, not ours, so... I'm ready. What are you gonna say?
So do we want to go ahead and approve submitting a stream crossing standards for the proposed changes for next year?
Yeah, that's fine. I'll move that.
Okay.
Sorry.
Moved and seconded that we go ahead and submit a stream crossing standards request to the State Water Commission. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Continue, Kevin.
Okay, and the next item are, we got one of our rental tractors now, and we've got the inlays for it. So the cost of that lease for one year is $4,977.50. Again, the John Deere ordered the bigger tractor than what we need, so we're paying for the bigger tractor. But then they're gonna reimburse us the extra cost, like we did last year. They, they have better luck selling the bigger tractor, so they do that, rather than try and have all the yard full of small tractors. And we're fine with running the big ones, it's just that... So just so you know. So a motion to pay for that.
Six.
We have a motion and a second to pay for the tractor rental, one-year lease. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And I got two of the layers back on the railroad crossings we submitted, the one by Bartlett and the one by Curry. They don't meet the threshold for plumbing at this time. And I'm still waiting here on the third one by Southland, just to update on that. Next, here's Jacob Moll to fill our position at the highway department. He worked for the city for a couple of years, and then went to work for a farmer later, so just a little background. He started this morning. And Gary Faglen is asking if we can get dust and suppress it in the town of Penn and trade for some of the mowing that were doing on, they are doing on the abandoned county lots in Penn. As you guys know, we're not supposed to be mowing those lots anyway, so I told him it probably wouldn't work. It probably wouldn't happen, but just so you guys are aware, that's all that discussion was.
Who does care for those lots?
Well, I think it's Gary's divorce, with his wife, Kim, lives in Penn also. And she does ninety percent of it, I would say. The people that live next to them, like, they can lots do a lot of it. But she is cleaning up the lots. They're a mess.
And is that the village of Penn's responsibility, or is that the county's responsibility?
Uh, it's, there are county lots that are in the county, but for individuals, you're not, you're supposed to leave them. Well, you guys know the story. You're supposed to leave them like nature or whatever. So, I don't know, cleaning them up, she does that soil candy mode. I mean, it's a mess to deal with. You gotta mow around everything, that type of thing. Dead tree branches, that kind of stuff, she's cleaning up.
Gary, have any idea what the cost of dust suppression would be in the community of Penn?
I have not a, no, I'd have to measure up the road and see. And I can't imagine there's a lot of traffic in that town. There's probably about five residents that live there, so...
Well, maybe, maybe you can find out about how much it would cost, and then we'll discuss it then. Is that reasonable? I mean, I don't know about a trade, but if it's not a lot, we might be able to just do it.
Well, and it may be just those main road through there.
The county road, here he is, well, we're paying seventy-five percent. He's paying twenty-five percent of the county road.
The county road that goes through there?
At least we do some of it for him.
Right.
There's some cost there.
But they're talking about the streets inside, um, which see very little traffic.
I can see why they want to have the dust on. That's really probably, I mean, once, like... I agree with you, so we should figure out what it would cost, just out of curiosity sake. But, you know, then all of a sudden, we're saying, well, are we gonna start to do that for Edmore and Lot? Maybe we can come up with some type of a, a, a cost share, make a cost share or something, kind of like we do with other county roads or something.
I think that'd be reasonable. It's just, it's just shame, you know, these towns are dying and on life support anyway. And they have no services to speak out.
Well, they don't have, yeah, they don't have any money to pay for dust and press. And then help, help the quality of living a little bit, you know, of somehow, you know, we can't eat the whole bill. Maybe we can think about something.
Yeah, so if you want to just look at it, I appreciate it.
Sure. The township does blade the roads far, but... You know, the last thing I put in math of our local projects, I think that is that's what we're doing this year. I don't know if interested or not, but...
This is awesome. Very good for this. I'd like to look at it and go, hey, I don't know what I'm talking about.
Right. This is 2021, what we have planned. And I probably don't have a lot of time to look at it, but any questions? The number three and number two are the bridges that we're tearing out and not replacing. And then number three is the one that I don't even think deer hunters go up there. It's just, doesn't go anyplace.
And then four and five are the ones that you're putting in culverts?
Yep. Four and five, and number one by Lawson Jones.
Yeah, this is great. Thank you.
We're gonna see what we can do about getting that Ramsey Benson County line open. That's gonna take some time, but we're gonna start blading it to keep the weeds on. We'll eventually need some gravel, but we gotta do some blading to kill, there's some trees growing in the middle of the road and all that kind of stuff, so we are working on that.
The bridge is still out of the water, that we had?
The bridge is out of the water. It kind of has washed out on the south end and a depression. And they're actually gonna haul the gravel to that this morning, and then open that first mile south, or the two, today. It's just a two-lane track and part of it, because it's been closed, but we're gonna hold in ditches and then eventually we... Two, two cars will need eventually.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
It's eight-thirty, it's time for the...
Do you all like to join us?
County tax equalization. Beth Mark, thank you for joining us this morning. Can you interrupt?
Yes, and if you'd like to call the tax equalization meeting, I'd like to start with, and I have the.
Reset, uh. Make a motion to recess the county commission meeting. And reconvene as an.
And reconvene candidly.
All seconded.
Then a motion and seconded to recess the county commission meeting and, uh, convene the grand county tax equalization meeting.
All right. Good morning. I, um, did email Candy a couple packets for you, one of us prepared by Mark, the city of Doubles Lake, and then a, a small one from us in our office. If you find, um, page one of ours, there is an agenda. The first, um, order of business would be to approve the city assessments as presented, and Mark is here, and he can kind of give you guys a quick recap and, and go from there.
Yeah, just ask questions if you have any, but just a brief recap, we, uh, you know, every district does a sales ratio study every year. A residential came a little under the state requirement, that eighty-nine percent, so. And same thing last year, we had to add about five percent last year, and this year we, we kind of did a hybrid change. We added a little more to the land than the improvements, but, uh, so we, the net was about four percent that we added to get us in the, uh, in the range that the state wants you to be on that sales ratio. Uh, the commercial sales ratio was at ninety-three percent, so, you know, ninety, between ninety and a hundred is the target area that the state wants you at on these assessments. So we didn't need to do anything with commercial there, so. I think one of the observations I had looking at some history is that the mill levy's been really stable the last three years for the city. It's been right around three hundred nineteen, three twenty. The last three years have hardly changed on that. The other observation I kind of, we used to be one of the higher taxed cities or higher mill levies, and I see we're looking at the statewide largest cities summary, Wapit and Minot, Jamestown, Valley City of all, all edged up, the city of Doubles Lake, they're all higher on the number of mills. I think, you know, Beth left you our report. Some of the larger changes that we made were on, starting on page thirteen. I don't know if we've got any questions on those. There weren't a lot of big changes this year, but, um, we, uh, it was, it was concerning COVID, I think, and the slowdown with that, I think there were still some decent increases. Our, uh, our TIP districts grew by, uh, our, the total now is at forty-two million, which is almost two thousand of taxable value, you know. When those come off, you know, that's gonna do nothing but lower the mill levy or pressure the mill levy down if, uh, if all the board members across the county, city, school, the park, uh, don't, uh, you know, commit any dramatic, but there's a lot of value in the city. And that, that's a lot more than the Wapit and Minot or Valley City have in, in TIP districts as well. So I think that's a good sign for our, our city is to have a lot of that, uh, that TIP district value sitting there. I hear Candy really likes working with TIP districts. I don't see any new ones on the horizon, but there's eight of them that we have out there, but they, they are complicated. They're, they have to be a headache for everybody. We had ninety-six Homestead credit applications this year, thirty-one disabled veteran applications. Yeah, if you got any questions, that's just kind of a.
So a brief summary. Just a quick question, because I'm curious. On, uh, this page here, looking at comparison of true and full values.
What they use, is there, is there a top number on there?
There is not a top number on mine. It was shortly before your, your graphs about true and full.
Okay.
The only, the only question that I had is just, just out of curiosity, you know, most of the time it looks like we're, you know, true and full is increasing by about three, three and a third percent on average. Why in, uh, twenty thirteen and fourteen did we have such a drastic increase in sixteen, I guess? I mean, is that, is that simply just fair market value increased that much, or did we do some kind of?
Maybe in a, we had some years, you know, where we've been hotels, they built and new restaurants were going up. We had, uh, uh, let's see, which years were those, like fourteen and fifteen?
Uh, I'm seeing thirteen and fourteen and sixteen.
Yeah, ten, eleven percent on those years.
I was just curious as to what would drive that.
Yeah, those were, you know, the, I think when the levy work was being done, or we had some hotel, cause, you know, you can add a lot of dollars with a couple of big projects. And, uh, we probably also, we had a couple of years where we had to do a nine percent, you know, to get within the state tolerance. We were sitting in the mid-eighties.
So, so some of those were as a result of adjustments, larger.
No doubt, no doubt that's a part of that.
Okay, that's kind of what I was curious is, you know, were we falling below the state's level, or did that much economic growth really occur in those years?
Yeah, that wouldn't have been just, just a reevaluation to get us that much. I think we had some years where we did a lot of stuff.
I do remember, um, shortly after two thousand ten, in my charting on our wall, major increases, and we were, the market was really fluctuating up. And, I mean, it was nine to ten percent changes on everything. So that, and that's brought to, I remember those are large years.
You look at, uh, at the same chart, look at two thousand and three, and we don't even have one percent going on. I think, again, that would have been a slower construction season than, but yeah, it's, on average, it's kind of predictable, isn't it? You're right around that three percent on, on average, but yeah, there was, well, again, in two thousand and sixteen was a, a pretty big jump too.
Right. And that's, yeah, but then the other thing that's sort of interesting, and I'm sorry, we're not really complex or much, but, um, it, it is, I feel it, it speaks to how insulated North Dakota was from the financial crisis, that we still saw a larger than what I would say our average increase in taxable valuation was in two thousand and nine.
And that's interesting you say that, because the reason why I moved back there was because of the recession, and my husband was in construction, and he started working over here to make ends meet, and then we just stayed. But that's exactly right, what was referring. North Dakota didn't, they just didn't do what was happening in the rest of the country.
I make motion to approve the city's assessment.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve the city assessment as presented. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, townships contracted to county for assessing?
Sure. On pages two to four, I just included any changes that they did within my own. They, there really weren't a lot, but we used to have a few of the smaller cities and townships that have their own assessors, and they went through their township and city meetings, and their assessments were approved through that. Uh, so it's now just time for you to continue to approve what they had done. And I don't have either of them here today, so, and I usually don't have, like I said, it didn't have a lot of change.
I make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve the values of townships contracted to county for assessing. Second. Second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then a motion to approve values of townships that provide their own assessors.
And that also is, um, between pages two to four, just kind of our major changes. Not a huge year in new construction and that, but still we did have some, and obviously there are regular changes, um, from taxable, non-taxable. Something went back to the county, or the county sold something, or cities, and that are all listed there. We had all of our township and city meetings, and actually besides, the only people we had show up were the board members, so that, um, made it easier this year than it can be. And, uh, once again, overall, we also painted around nine, or eighty-nine percent, and so most, many properties have to turn a four to five percent increase to keep us closer to that ninety-five percent. Obviously, there's some other changes I have to do. One thing that's really starting to come up is lake lots that are coming out from under the water and are being used, um, that we had maybe in the past listed them as inundated and lowered their value, so starting to make some changes in that area too. And we'll probably definitely this next year have to do more, um, in that and in the land.
Ones that changed from a value in two thousand and twenty to zero, uh, taxable to non-taxable?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Um, that examples could be whether it was, um, lost for taxes, but many could be farmsteads that now qualify for the farmer's exemption.
Sure.
Or something like that.
I was wondering why we had so many, not so many, but you know.
Yeah, I think there was just under ten this year that, um, were able to, uh, file that hadn't in the past.
Yeah, cause I was thinking, I keep wondering, you know, it's, it's not like all of a sudden we have a bunch of traditional churches.
Right.
Something that would be property tax exempt going up, so what would those be? Okay.
Any other questions on, uh, townships that provide their own assessors? If not, I'd maintain a motion.
So.
Oh, we did, but it's backwards. Yes, I'm sorry. I slipped it. I don't know if it is covered or not here, but townships did not provide their own. We provide this change of motion that we provide assessing for.
What's that?
On the motion, you'd motion to approve values of, for townships that we provide, that the county provides assessing for.
So what was our first motion?
Well, I thought our first motion would.
Oh, contracted county, okay, yeah.
Contracted to county for assessing.
What, what was the first motion?
Yeah, I just read that. I'm not positive which one we're.
Township's contracted to counties for assessing.
That was the one we made previously.
Yes, right.
Okay, so this one needs to be that the township provide their own assessment. We just wrote it backwards.
Wait, that's all.
It's okay. Yep. Motion, did we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Then a motion to approve the inundated land classifications for the attached list of applicants.
And I do have that on page five. Um, that is actually a state, um, program, so really, um, everything is ran through them, but I always like to include it and make sure that you're aware of the people that are applying for, um, any inundated lands in the county. And so it really doesn't get too huge. It just looks a little longer, cause I'm one family filed a few more than usual. But I, I would think that we're going to start seeing less and less of that, um, now that, if we stay in this dry cycle.
Moved and seconded. We have a motion and a second to approve the inundated acres. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And then, uh, changes. We're recommending a change between two and five percent of our agricultural valor, values. Current percentage is eighty-nine percent, and we need to be within that to ninety percentile rate, isn't it?
Yes, and I, I, um, you know, I definitely also included on page seven, you know, what, you've seen this earlier this year, just kind of what we've done in the past. I wouldn't mind seeing closer to the four percent increase to get us closer to the ninety-five, uh, as that's where commercial is sitting now and residential is close to that. But definitely, we need to do over two because we don't want to be too close. Last year with the not change and with acres changing and that, it was really close at the end to make sure that the number came in correctly. So definitely somewhere between two and, and the five percent.
I make the motion that we, uh, accept a four percent increase to ninety-three percent for agricultural land value.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to do four percent increase for agricultural land valuations. Any further discussion? Beth, do you have a estimate on how much land we'll back out of taxes is coming out of water?
Um, I don't have any today, but we had prepared that earlier. We're looking at like doing, changing, having you, um, changed the previous motion where we're reducing fourteen fifty-three and a half to a different number, and we looked at at that time fourteen fifty-one. Um, I don't have the numbers in front of me and haven't looked at it very closely, but when we did do that, we saw that the majority of the county reduced by three percent. And that is something, um, that I plan on bringing to you this fall. Uh, I, I will probably set up a meeting. I'll have, um, I'll have Steve look at who the largest landowners are that would see an increase with their land coming out. Maybe have a meeting with them first just to get some ideas together, and then we can kind of run the numbers again and bring it back to you later this fall, um, to see about implementing to add more acres back in this next year. It seems like probably it's time, you know. We didn't want to go up and down or, you know, or do any hardship or anything like that. It took a while to come off. It takes a little while to go back on, so, but definitely something we'll look into this year.
I think we should allow a grace period there for those people to, for everybody to see.
Yeah.
You know, what's gonna happen.
Right, exactly, yeah. That's what I thought. I kind of meet with some of the very affected people, and then we can open it up from there, just to get it started. Yeah.
Get back to normal or anything that resemble normal.
Yeah.
I think everybody would be real happy then, so.
And definitely choose an elevation that is real.
It might not straight dry.
You know.
It might not straight dry. We don't know that.
Right.
And you gotta, gotta pick a safe elevation.
And that was where we were at before.
Like you said, we don't want to hop year to year. I think we've been pretty reasonable about that, trying to make sure we don't jump around and everything, but.
And then one, if we did implement it one year, then we can look at each year or every couple of years, changing that elevation to continue on.
That's a huge number, though, when you think about it, that, that the acres that would be added would change the whole valuation of the county by three percent. I mean, that's a decent amount of valuation that's been under the water or is now out of the water again. It's kind of crazy. When you're setting that, usually so it's a little bit, or a couple of feet higher than the lake at the time, right?
When they did the fourteen fifty-three.
Yeah, right.
You know, and that was before me, but I think that was just where, that was the number they decided at that time.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we do, like, maybe, when, when, when we looked, we didn't look at it, but just for informational sake, when we had that put together, wasn't it at fifty or fifty-one?
Fifty, fourteen fifty-one is what we were using.
Cause we felt that that was still a, a somewhat reasonably safe number, that it wouldn't jump there quick enough that probably.
Yeah.
That we can safely do that, so.
It's fourteen forty-eight point two today.
Yeah, so it's both repeatable. I mean, it's not, there's, we've seen the lake put three feet on it here. I mean, we're not saying it can't happen.
But that's in the NGV twenty-nine day, so it's about one point two feet different than whatever we surveyed it.
All right, any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor. I don't think we voted on that correctly, uh, for four percent, uh, increase on valuations. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Anything else? Mr. Lang, thank you so much for joining us. Motion to oppose the tax equalization meeting and reconvene that county commission is. In consecutive meeting of the tax equalization meeting is closed. We'll reconvene the county commission meeting. Resume our agenda. Lisa, Deeseft, and Gabe Steen from Bremer Bank.
Hi. Um, we got our, the Beijing from the municipal bonds. We had, um, two banks that didn't want to participate. Bremer Bank is the one that has come forth to us. Um, Gabe is here. Cade is here and Bryce, Bryce is here. I guess I brought them in if you had any questions. I think it's a go, but I want to make sure that if you guys have questions, that we're all on the same page.
Sure. Anybody have any questions for Lisa or Cade or Bryce? This all looks like a very good deal. We had a conversation with Lisa on Friday and very much recommended.
How many counties are doing this now yet? I remember you said that there's quite a few.
There's, there's a few when they're trying to get some cities involved also. The one that I've been working with is Dutzman County, which is Jamestown. They've been in it for a few years.
Happy with it, comfortable with it?
Very happy with it.
I would just say, you know, we've been talking a lot, it's kind of a neat thing that, like, you said, not everybody's doing, I guess, as far as banks feeling comfortable, just because of the state statutes, we have specific people that are always following that. And we have a portfolio manager that he's following those statutes to make sure we stay within, in the right way. And we've been talking to a lot of counties, cities, even school districts, kind of any of those state statute run entities can do this. And it's a, with the low interest rate environment, it just helps get a little yield. Well, we always are making sure we're keeping very high quality bonds that we're using for this so there's not a huge risk of default or anything to help you get a lot better interest rate return on that. And that's something that Bremer, we always watch. A few years ago, we had a few of these where interest rates started to rise, we moved more money back to the bank because it just made more sense. So, you know, that's always something we're going to look at year to year on where is best for you guys and that's what we're here for, just to help wherever it makes sense to have it, so.
And of course, I did reach out to the examiners because that's who I have to, I'll make the go ahead, so, trust you guys.
I just got to say, you got, you got a good one here in Lisa, she, she keeps us, keeps us honest over there. And since CD rates are less than stellar, this is, you know, the conversation started about a couple of months ago. I hope you guys all have copies of the presentation that I did.
They had at one time, but I didn't provide them. That was the last one we had, was the twenty-nine.
Yeah, I emailed it, I'll give us one, so.
Yeah.
So if you want a copy of it, by all means, I'll provide.
The only question that I have, and I doubt that this would be the case, but just to make sure that I know, if for whatever reason the county chose to go in a new direction and this was no longer working for them, there are no fees of any kind to transfer that money out, is there?
So, if you're looking to completely move outside of Bremer and close everything, there could be up to a five hundred dollar fee at most. If it's moving within the bank, there'd be no fee.
Okay.
So, at all, but.
So, five hundred dollars is the maximum amount that the county would be held liable for in that case?
Right, and odds are, you know, if you're not moving everything away from Bremer, we'd probably reduce that down because you do have a sizable relationship overall. I just want to be upfront that that's kind of the absolute most that our fee would be for closing everything out, so.
Just want to make sure I'm not tying the hands of future generations.
Absolutely, no, I completely understand.
Five hundred dollars is pretty reasonable. We're talking about what is our, what is our, our banking going in Bremer right now?
What do we have, five, a little over five million?
A little over five, I think, we lost.
Five hundred dollars would be very reasonable.
We, we do appreciate the business, by the way.
Yeah.
So, Lisa, do you have a sense for how much money you would like to see the county move into this municipal bond fund right away? Is that, is that number five million?
At first, right now, we had a couple CDs come due last week. So, I put those into the money market just to see where we're at. So that's what I'm going to move in there first.
And what dollar on is that?
We're going to be looking at about three million.
Okay.
I think that's what we plan to talk to them right away.
So, and we're just going to gradually, if this is a go, we're going to just gradually go into it. I do have a couple more CDs coming in, like June, I want to say June tenth, I think they're due. So then we'll see and then move that in there also. And what's nice is, you know, we don't have to have a plenty of assets because these are covered, correct? You guys covered.
On, on the bank side, they are, yes.
On the bank side, you're covered, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and I will just say, not that you have to move it all, but if you wanted to move more, we would always waive the penalty on any early withdrawal on the CDs.
All of those true CDs, correct.
If you wanted to, being it's all with Bremer and we're keeping it. We would pay you whatever interest is owed to you up to the day we're closing them. But most CDs have a penalty then, we would not charge that, then we could just move it over. So, if you wanted to do, you know, I, I get the slow approach and there's nothing wrong with that, but I just want to throw out there that there would be no cost to you guys to close out the CDs earlier if you wanted to get out of the lower interest rate.
True.
So.
Other questions? We need a motion to go ahead with this, correct, Lisa?
I would like to, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I'll motion to, I would say do the slow process, remove the three million or those CDs that you have due.
Yeah, yep.
And start this process.
Okay. Then who we want on?
I'll, I'll second, just for discussion, the question that I have is, does the remaining two million come due in June?
Yeah, it's like the beginning of June here, it's like.
So it's like now, right?
I want to say June tenth, that's just.
So the slow process is five to ten days?
Is it the next two?
Yeah.
Or if we just do it all, we, we, okay, well, we could do it all because there's no penalty.
I think we should give this up into discretion of the treasurer.
I, I tend to, simply because.
Every time we're getting.
Yeah, well, when we move money around to our bank accounts, you just kind of tell us where things need to go and we trust you to do it, so.
Exactly.
She's a lucky person.
Yeah.
Well, I, I do think definitely need a motion at the very least to.
Yeah, to, to move into the program, yes.
As a matter of that, I agree with you, right?
Yeah, yeah, for the municipal bond program. Is that what it would be officially called, would be that?
Yeah, we, yeah, municipal bond program, you know, whatever, that's what we would say it is, whatever. If you guys want a different title to it, I guess you can call it whatever you want, but it's a municipal, municipal bond strategy.
And that's probably what we put on our cash sheet.
Yeah, correct.
So you would see that cash sheet.
So we'd go ahead and amend that agenda or that motion to re.
Move to.
Allow the treasurer to.
Sure, too.
Okay.
Make it work.
And that's okay with you, second, Lucas?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Okay. Any further discussion? Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you once again.
You guys.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Kevin and you were completed with your, your lead on that. All right. Let's jump into new business. Approve human resource job offer. We have a job offer going out to Mr. Brian Singer. Scheduled start date of Wednesday, June ninth, full-time position, forty hours a week, offering starting base of five thousand per month. Job offer is contingent upon completion of satisfactory background check, passing drug test, and the approval of the Ramsay County Commission. Mr. Singer did go ahead and sign that and is willing to hit the ground running. So, after our committee have met and interviewed, that's the recommendation from the hiring committee that the commission set forth to go ahead and hire that position or interview for that position.
And I'll just say, having sat on that committee, I thought Mr. Singer did a very excellent job, you know, answered all of our questions to a degree that I was very comfortable with and I think that he will do a very good job for the county if, if the commission chooses to accept the job offer.
And the committee was comprised of myself, Commissioner Wakefield, Candy, Rhonda sat through the interviews. Mr. Cummings joined us following, he had a hearing scheduled the morning of the interview, so was not able to join us during the actual interviews, but sat through the process afterwards. So, appreciate everybody's time and effort going forward.
Interview was involved in it, in other words, good experience, especially if I have a look at the, my resume.
He was, he was the human resources person at, at Evenhead Harland for fifteen years.
So he's got a lot of experience. Beats all the qualifications everything we need there. I don't think he's coming in blind for that. No, no, I mean.
The hiring, the hiring committee felt that his, his work experience more than qualified him, I think is fair to say.
I'll make the motion that we approve the job offer.
Okay. Motion and a second, Ed.
I'd like to ask our partner, what social service thing of the situation, Rhonda?
The hiring committee did go forward with recommending, they took a vote. I voted no, and I, the reason was he does not have a bachelor's degree and the, the job description states a bachelor's degree is required and it also states the ad that we placed, so for fair standards hiring practices, it didn't meet my standards, so. But there was a vote and it was, I think, two to three, so that was the hiring committee's recommendation. But that was what, I, I, I stand by that he has very good experience, but we advertised for a bachelor's degree, so my thought process was that we needed to re-advertise like we did with similar positions in the county when we didn't meet minimum qualifications, so that was my stand.
It was on the application that I would agree was required, is that correct?
I didn't.
Did you read it?
I didn't draft it, but yes, there is a, it says bachelor's degree. I've had ongoing conversations with the Association of Counties, their legal counsel and their HR team. They believe that this applicant is qualified in that there are eligible departures that you can make from having a bachelor's degree, but that's not my call to make, that was a decision of the committees.
And we, and we discussed that with them before we, before we made it.
I think with them, no, the state, county?
Association of Counties.
Association of Counties. And they were.
I mean, it, it sounds to me like, I guess, in my opinion, I know, but everyone's comfortable with the individual, it's just a matter of making sure that we cross our T's, dot our I's and everything is done correctly.
So the example that was given by the legal counsel or Association of Counties was, say you're trying to hire somebody to fly an airplane for your airline. You have somebody coming out of undergraduate with a four-year degree or somebody graduating from the Air Force who's flown jets for fifteen years. That person is still qualified even though they don't have the degree and then it becomes the county's discretion to decide which way they want to go. That's, that's how it was explained to me.
So the Association of Counties, they feel that we have that leeway?
Correct.
And you talked to who down there?
I spoke with Chuck Porter and then also Aaron Burst. So basically they've let stop on maintenance decision, to the degree that they're able to. I think they're taking legal responsibility.
All they can do is give us the best advice, like, off the, off the information available.
That's the biggest hangup I have, well, the Association of Counties is.
Yeah, and that's, and that's why I'm.
Give it the blessing, I guess.
I, I trust that the hiring committee, you know, everybody I've talked to said that he interviewed well and that he would be a good hire. That's not the question, it's just making sure that we've got everything lined up and we're doing everything correctly so that we can't have anybody come back and go, well, you didn't do things right, you know? But if, if, if we have the state's attorney saying he believes it's okay, he's talked with unsightly legal counsel that seem to think it's, we don't have a problem with it, then I think we're okay. But I just wanted to make sure that we had our, everything, our bases covered as well.
And I think it wouldn't hurt anything going forward on our applications to say if we're putting a requirement for a degree to clarify or offset a work experience, right?
Yeah, and I think that's, that's an easy, that's an easy way to fix it in the legislature.
That would make it very transparent.
Yeah, so we don't have to go out, when we have a candidate that we know has requisite experience and is qualified and that we don't have any of that, there's no gray area, well, there's adding gray area, which is a good thing in that situation.
Well, I, I guess I'd still make an argument that there, there is a reading of the job application as we posted it that would state that we're already sent that.
Okay.
You know, which was, it said requires a bachelor's degree in human resources or related experience, is that what it says, or?
No, or.
It wasn't an or.
It was an or. There is an or, but the way the commas read it, it's a bachelor's degree in this area, this area, or related field. That's how it was.
Okay.
And that's why it's so, so important that we get this position filled. And they're the ones that are ultimately, yeah, never want to be on a hiring committee again, so thank you. Yeah. So we have a motion and a second on the floor.
One question you have from Rhonda, you're all right with social service here or you're all right with this deal? I mean, I, I want social service involved at half of this time, right?
Yeah.
So the question.
Did the state ever come back and say they could pony up a little bit or?
Well, it's through the county wide cost allocation because it's direct, it's direct, it's a direct cost or an indirect cost. So that means that the county through the county wide cost allocation or mills would pay for HR, the building, the, the maintenance. So it's, it's considered indirect. So, just to be clear, for transparent, fair hiring practices, what you advertise for is what you should hire unless you repost it. That was the only concern. There is no concern with Mr. Brian Singer's resume or his experience, but that I, it, it's not about his resume or experience in hiring him, it's about what we advertise for in fair and standard hiring practices. So that was my only concern, so.
Kay, uncomfortable with what, our case attorney told, the commission as far as Association of Counties relate to us, so I guess, yeah, I'm all right with it.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you. Review lease agreement for attending care, this is at the school for the deaf. We have that lease agreement with the state of North Dakota. Is, uh, North Coast School for the Deaf, County Open Dick Superintendent, annual of thirty-six hundred dollars, three hundred dollars monthly and it kind of goes through the cost per square footage of the facility.
Candy, we pay us every month?
Yes.
Do you have any, um, faculty, open dicks to love there, right?
Yes.
Do they just have it yearly, or another, just more than you pay them?
I guess so, I, I don't have it.
How do you want it to be, yeah, how, how do you want it?
It, it's just automatic to pay it every month because we, we get bills for meals as well, so.
Oh, okay, you're going to pay those anyways, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're fine. Because then if anything happens, then, yeah, you know, we've got to get that money. And this is, yeah, it's been a great place for us. It's the federal program that's both, usually in other counties is run through the sheriff's department, but the, the human service zone took it over because we also use that spot. It's used for juveniles as an alternative to jail. And then that's federally paid by the, the North Dakota Association of Counties receives those federal funds and reimburses our county line item. But our human service zone also pays that county line item for children that we have that are shelter care. And we've had one in and out of there the past couple weeks, so.
Working on that.
Yes, thank you.
I'll move into second.
Moved and approved, that we approved the lease agreement for attendant care, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
They'll probably never see it, but a big thing to the deaf school for allowing us to continue there because it's, it's, it's been a great location considering we had to scramble to kind of find it, it's been nice and stable for a long time, other than making sure we have people to work.
Yeah, it's, it's been great, and I worked last night, we are very short.
Yeah, we need to find more people as always.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Uh, next item on the agenda, approved site authorizations.
Move to second.
Motion in the second to approve site authorization. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, VA credits. We have motion in the second to approve the VA credits. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And Homestead credit.
Move to approve.
We have motion in a second to approve the Homestead credit. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Discussion on twenty twenty-two budget. I know all our political subdivisions are working hard and diligently on completely theirs. Do you have a July first deadline on that list, correct, Candy? Our political subdivisions?
No, some are July ten. Century College.
Okay.
Yeah.
July ten or August ten?
Yeah.
So.
I, I encourage all of that to
Yeah.
Consider you could have a better word.
Yeah, no, nobody wants to mess around from that, please, yeah. They're, they're usually in for the deadline, so.
That's good.
Which is good.
Other discussions on the twenty twenty-two budget. We will be having our preliminary stuff due August tenth, correct?
I just need direction on where to tell them or where to get department heads as far as wages. I didn't get an email from Blue Cross for an estimated for costs for next year. Um, an increase between zero and five percent?
For health insurance costs.
For health insurance.
That is good.
Has there been anything, you know, well, I always use Social Security Administration for the COLA, generally speaking, uh, has there been any? I, I guess I haven't seen anything yet with the cost of living adjustment, I, I know that it's, I guess I would assume, I don't know. But with inflation being higher than normal coming out of the recession or coming out of the pandemic and money being pushed into the economy. You know, I would guess the cost of living adjustment is going to have to be higher than that normal. One or two percent we usually look at, three, four, yeah, because I mean, we're looking at what, four point two percent inflation rate now or something like that, so. I, I don't think, I shouldn't say don't think, but I, I don't know if we'll be able to keep up with inflation. But I'd like to see us at least try to shoot for a middle section so that our workers, all of our employees don't go backwards and behind power horribly. Because hopefully the inflation will kind of slow itself down as the economy slows down, or not slows down, but as things kind of equal out the second half of the year.
Remind me, last year, did we do two percent in a step?
Yes.
That's what we did?
Yeah.
So maybe something like three percent in a step this year, I think I'd be comfortable with, not really?
And I'd like to see like we've done in the past where we, we, we shoot for three percent in a step and then we see maybe one and a half or two, or two percent, one percent, and we can make an adjustment accordingly as we come in towards the budget. Yeah. Simply because, I, I'm not saying like we're better or anything like that, but I, I know there were a lot of counties last year that took in zero percent on the cost of living to try to hold the line. So I think we've been pretty aggressive in attempting to keep, you know, wages escalating to help, you know, keep our employees, uh, you know, out.
You're talking three percent of a step, that's like a mid-layer, like?
As in?
Like what you're saying, three percent in a step, or?
So it's a cost of living adjustment and a, and a step on the basis of?
Yeah, so positive performance for you runs a step up, and, and a step usually ends up being what, probably, depends on where you're at in the system. But like, usually like one to one and a half percent raise basically on a step, something like that. Because our steps are stretched out to
Yeah, I'm, I got it.
Well, I've definitely got here, remember, it's twenty-five or thirty?
No, we're not at, we're not at thirty.
Because we did stretch it out a few years ago, twenty-five, because we did have, we have so many quality, long-term employees that they were hitting the top end of the scale. And then we couldn't, we had to add steps on to try to allow them to continue to achieve raises, which is something that needs to happen.
And still have that issue.
Yeah, and something we might have to look at.
So even if they're max, even if they're maxed out on step, they can't get a COLA?
Basically, they get the three percent, yes.
They get the COLA at that point.
And that's where we've been, we have so many quality, long-term employees that a lot of them hit the top end of the step system and then we're trying to keep up with the COLA for them as well, but more than anything, the COLA is to try to keep the step system.
Wish that were right, but that would ever happen.
Maybe we should add that, uh, we have that in a spreadsheet, correct?
Yes, yes, yeah, and I'll get that, I'll, I'll do it for, yeah.
And distribute that all to our next meeting so we can take a look at it and, and, uh.
Because of plan and schedule.
And it doesn't have to happen this year, but I think long-term it would be reasonable to look at possibly stretching that step system out a little bit further, you know, go from twenty-five to thirty or something, just because we have so many long-term employees, just so we don't cap people out.
Thirty, thirty is even.
Thirty might not even be enough, or just something to look at in the future, it's not something that has to be happening right now.
Yeah, that'll give me a place to start. Okay.
Anything else we want to talk about on budget for twenty twenty-two? Get that to the department heads and
It's gonna be a, it's gonna be a follow-up?
Too bad.
It'll be all right.
Yeah, it always, as we go into it, kind of, but it usually ends up pretty long, so.
Well, at least, at least we're given some kind of a range number from Blue Cross instead of that kind of thing, you know, where it's all the very last, because.
They actually said zero?
Zero, five percent.
So crazy.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the most shocking you've ever, wow, because most of the time we're going up, maybe it'll be ten, maybe it'll be twelve.
So, so, yeah. Yeah. So I'm just gonna go higher number and go five and
Speaking, uh, just, just out of curiosity, I mean, I didn't work out specifically, but how are we tracking this year on uh, health insurance costs as, as related to, uh, our shop loss and everything, are we running, about, where are we projected, are we running under or over?
Um, I'm gonna need a check for like a month or two, so I can, I'll get that spreadsheet so that you can see where it's at.
Just, just, yeah, just, just curiosity, because it's something we talked about a couple years ago, and, and it seemed like that one year was kind of a blip where we had just a lot of high dollar claims and then we kind of went back to normal again.
It just, it fluctuates so much from one week to the next of where the dollar is that, you know, like last week was huge for, yeah.
Everybody went to the doctor, or I'll, I'll just go back in the same week.
Well, and I, I think something in, I think something in there where somebody had a baby.
Oh, oh.
So.
All of a sudden.
You know, and then, and then goes down to almost nothing, and then it goes back up, I mean, so it, you know. But it's, you know, I haven't seen like the real high dollars like we did this year with, with everything, so.
Before he asks to go, uh, Bo, do you have any quick for us?
Keep up the good work.
Any, any, any questions for Bo?
I'll tell you when it starts, I'll just
Well, thank you for taking the time, we appreciate you coming in. Nothing else on budget discussion? Good there. Your department's kind of a direction on where they should be looking, uh.
Just for warning, it's gonna be a big year for me.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks.
All right. Uh, visitors, delegations, uh, unless Paul, you had something, or as far as?
We get our announcements.
Okay. Portfolio reports, we can run through those, Commissioner Lepone, we'll start with you.
Um, let's see, uh, for Devil's Lake met after, was that for our last meeting? Yeah, I believe it was after our last meeting, um, just kind of steady as she goes over there, they're working on a lot of different, uh, a lot of different things, uh, industrial park, things like that, uh, additional space, uh, just talking more, uh, broad, you know, five-year plan type of things, strategic vision type of things. And then the, the day-to-day stuff, people coming in. County Housing Authority, things have been going fairly well, uh, Tim's been in the dug for a little bit now, uh, we've had some staff turnover, uh, so we're looking to hire a couple more people. I think he's probably been advertising for it, uh, I think that left me, I can't talk to him, but then. Just like we're talking about here in terms of our budget, the cost of, uh, employees and wages and everything continues to escalate, so. And, and especially in a situation like the housing authority where we have a finite amount of dollars coming in, because we're based off of obviously rental income, which HUD and structures, uh, so it's capped. And then we also only receive so much government aid from HUD, so you have a finite pool of dollars to try to pay everybody from, so it's tough to try to keep up with those escalating wages, but we're trying our best to try no keep the employees we have in, in good standing and try to attract quality employees as well. Social services, I missed the last meeting, uh, so if I apologize for that, Ed was there, I believe.
Yeah, I seem to want to find
Yeah, I, I was, I don't remember what happened. I was in the field. I don't remember. Yeah, well, I, yeah, I think that's what it was, it was like, hey, if it rain, let's get the, let's get some seeds in the ground, and then it did, it rained, what a surprise. Lastly, I think the only other thing I would have had is, uh, we're looking at doing a Northeast Nine County Commission meeting, uh, June twenty-third, Sam, Dick, Dr. Candy also visited with me about it. Main agenda items would be talking about the things we talked about here recently, big stuff, uh, ND PERS going forward. Uh, how that plan is gonna, uh, work in the interim and how they're gonna, you know, how do we figure how we're going to work forward, uh, going into the twenty-three session already, which is hard to believe, but that's happening. Uh, talking about, um, uh, the federal funds, which we have some, uh, legislative counsel on the desk talking about those COVID funds and how they can be used and spent because we're getting more directives now, so that'll be, uh, a topic of discussion. Uh, as well as talking about the, uh, the mill levy that is going to be coming off in twenty twenty-three for roads, I believe it's a ten-mill
Twenty-thing?
Twenty.
Twenty-four.
Yeah.
But we have to start to talk about, uh, going to the people if we want to keep that mill levy in place and asking for that authority going forward, so. Uh, the discussion about having a plan about when we go forward and ask people if we want to keep that mill levy in place, do we think we need it in place? That's a discussion we'll have to go forward at this, at this, at these meetings going forward, which is something that started to get in the back of our mind.
Would, would that be beneficial on that, you'd need to maybe have invite Terry, Trainer, or?
Yes, and they all are coming.
Yeah.
Actually, he just sent an email this morning, it said it's him and like
I just, I just looked at it right now.
Three or four other staff members, because he said they haven't got to get out of the office for quite a while, so everybody wants to come to Devil's Lake, so we're gonna have a full contingent from the Association of Counties.
Great.
So it's gonna, yeah, and, and, uh.
Can I say it's three all ready already?
Yeah. And he's, yeah, and Stan, Stan came, came to be awarded now, I'll, I'll, I dropped the ball from the prospect that we haven't done enough of these meetings, but COVID got away and all that stuff too, and I didn't want to add any meetings to people before that, we hadn't met for a while. So I think it's good we're all going to get together, there's some really big topics that we all need to kind of get in the room and start to ruminate in our brains, so. That's coming up, uh, I think it's the twenty-third.
One other thing we should discuss there is the, uh, the nurse's health insurance. MACO did go with that health insurance, maybe get some input from them on how it's working for them or how, not that we need to go to it, but it's
Oh, they, they, they went to, through them as a provider versus doing like the ND PERS Sanford type setup?
Correct.
Okay, interesting, maybe something after we work on. Yeah, it might not necessarily be the most applicable essence for Blue Cross, but for the other counties it might be really.
You're, you're seeing more entities change, you know, regions from Blue Cross just because the prices get down and, I mean, the federal side now, they give us five options, you don't even have to go Blue Cross. I mean, we're looking, they pay a third, and I'm still looking at thirteen hundred dollars a month for my portion, and on the federal side, I'm just, I'm just, so I think that's why they're, like you said, looking at that, it's, it's crazy, yeah.
Now, keeping up with the escalating costs and helping there and trying to keep people paid when you could, I mean, I think we've all seen that there's jobs openings everywhere right now, which if you're looking for a job, I guess, is a fantastic thing because they're, you know, the pain is escalating, and I think that's not necessarily a bad thing, you know, but it, it just makes it really, really difficult to keep up.
I think that's, should be all, yeah.
Commissioner Volk?
I guess recorder had nothing, at least I answered everything on the tracker side. Lake Axess, we had a meet, uh, a meeting last Wednesday, there was nothing really pertinent to be played, all it was just a normal meeting of how everything's running with the tournaments coming and coming. Um, the Fair Board, there's two events coming up, Four H, they have Saffron, uh, and Tare Don on the fourteenth. Uh, the Wrestling Club will help do that, and then they have a rodeo coming up. And then we can get Philip Lake here, so, so she gets, uh, I don't know, I'll try to, I don't know, if you can. Other than that, anything more good?
Ed?
Yeah, we, social service, I'm fine, and T M L is doing good, and the jail, what's on the budget? I don't think you all are good. Lots of prison. Else to have?
Lucas?
Uh, Heritage Center is having their arts festival the nineteenth to twentieth of June. And that's gonna be centered at the Heritage Center, but will sort of be a little bit broader, I think several local businesses are gonna be hosting artwork. So as you walk into their business, different artists will have something on display there. And it's a competition to crown that of the winning artist, so that's exciting, it's pushed you to doing it, so hopefully everybody has a chance to be around that weekend, we'll see. Library, uh, right now the board is having a discussion about, uh, what Adam just touched on, which is employee retention. Seeing a lot of turnover, uh, and so going into this budget cycle, I, I believe that it's gonna probably be that the, the director's going to ask that all the part-time staffers be making fifteen dollars an hour to try to, to keep them on the staff, because right now I think the average is twelve or thirteen. And, and our turnover is rampant, it's like every month you're hiring somebody to be a circulation librarian. At this time, we haven't decided if we're going to come and ask again for, um, the assistant director being full-time, but I still feel that there's a lot of value there, I mean, you're still seeing numbers of five to six thousand people going in and out of the library a month. Which is a lot to have one full-time employee there.
How many people on six thousand?
The, uh, inventory control system at front keeps count.
Oh, really?
So, so I mean, even if, even if people are walking in and out several times, which I'm sure there is some of that, you're still talking probably at least three thousand people, and that's a lot every month.
But it's utilized, that, that's a positive thing.
So.
People wonder why we need libraries.
Yeah.
We still need them, we're still used.
So that's, uh, that's everything I think, oh, no, that's not everything, Candy just told me. Uh, my two terms are up, uh, as, uh, the county commission's representative on the library board. I think it's been very, I don't think we're required to have a commissioner be the representative, but even before me and Rana Isla was, and I think that there's a lot of value there. Uh, so I would encourage one of you on this board to fill my sheet. and I think that there's a lot of value there, uh, so I would encourage one of you on this board to fill my sheets, what little there are to fill. That's, is that at the end of June?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do it next meeting.
How often do they meet, every month?
Every month. Every month, these, or the first, the Thursday, the second Monday, although they're looking at changing the meeting time.
Is it always at nighttime or during the day?
Ten A M. Yeah, well, it's easy, because the board has always been a little old lady.
Yeah.
I agree, uh, so we're gonna probably change that meeting time, but it is once a month.
That's where the Forward Devil's Lake meeting is up to, at ten A M, it's always up.
And a couple like that.
Were you good out of notice for anybody interested, or do you wanna keep it within the commission?
Like I said, I think, I think that there's value there to have a member of the commission on that.
We have two representatives?
Two representatives.
So that, we have two and then the city has, agree?
Who's the other one? Sawyer, the second.
Yeah, Sawyer. I think, I think I like the fact that we have one commissioner, at least, um, all of these where we have multiple appointments, just because it keeps, it keeps the information flowing back up here, especially when that library budget is a pretty decent-sized budget that we.
Well, not, not just for yourself, you do the job.
No, I'm not getting myself into it, I'm just saying. I've got enough jobs, I've got enough.
And then the other.
But I, like I told him, maybe we could talk to swap here or something.
We could do that.
We could maybe, maybe shuffle the board appointment, and, you know, maybe I'll get something, we'll talk about it. But I think we should keep commissioner on it, just says.
I, I do too. And actually, it's funny, because the, I think the county now funds a larger portion of the library's budget from the city does, fairly confident that that's true. And, and.
I won't even go into that.
We, because we're talking budget, um, we're at five out of six mills for the city, and what are we at for the county?
Two point two.
Two out of four for the county, and so if, if the budget increases, and I, I've had this discussion with them, where I said, hey, this happens at the county level all the time, that we have these joint agreements with the city that we end up, we're funding, the mill cap for libraries in North Dakota is six mills for the, for a city, four mills for a county. So what's very likely to start happening over the next few years, if city mills don't become more valuable, is it's gonna be sixty, sixty-five percent funded by the county, just so everybody's aware, that's because there's no money to be had in the city legally. They're already at three million. Five, five of six.
What's the city number, twenty grand now, something like that? Eighteen, eighteen?
I think it is nineteen, it's nineteen, it's on.
Nineteen out of the sixty-three or whatever. Our, our, well, the, the library is one of the only mills where we actually split the mills, so it's not in town, in town. So it's a forty-four, something like that, three, forty-three. Yeah, and, and I, I should mention that, I'm not trying to speak out of turn, but that's a discussion we've had at, at Forward Devil's Lake as well, simply because, Brad, at our last meeting, Brad was talking about, you know, obviously, I'm, I'm sure most everybody knows that that large soybean crushing plant is going in over east of Jameson and Spiritwood, and the industrial park that Jameson job, the Stetson job development, I don't know what the technical term is, but, and he said he's been getting a lot of questions, well, why don't we get things like that? Well, some of it is ninety-four, some of it's rail access, a lot of those things, obviously, plus that's down next to the soybeans.
Existing, yeah.
Existing, but that's a long-term play by that Stetson job development, where we fund our job development, it's something in the tune of a hundred and fifty, a thousand dollars a year between the city and the county for the actual organization, plus the GoFund has, you know, a certain dollar, I forget what goes into it. Stetson last year, if I remember correctly, he said, put in something like one point eight billion dollars.
The county.
The county, between the county and the city, I believe, but they fund their organization to go out and try to find those things. Uh, so, not that I'm saying that's what we're gonna do here, but it's just that long-term discussion on where's the funding level that you need to have to really go out and try to get those, I mean, but that, that long-term play of all of those things that have happened out in Spiritwood were all built on top of one another, essentially. We got the one thing, then you, then the one thing's there, you get the next thing, and, you know.
Right, it's, it starts to snowball.
Yeah, and it kind of snowballs, because all of a sudden you have the steam and all of the things they need for the power and everything like that to make all these things work. Plus, that ninety-four access is huge, obviously, and, and down rail to get the river going.
I think the, the hardest part about economic development and spending public dollars on it is a successful venture capital firm, you know, so a company that's in it to make money, that goes and funds other companies. What's considered a smashingly successful venture capital firm is when they fund ten businesses and one of them makes it. Right, that's a, that's a smashing success, and everybody that's involved in it will be immensely wealthy, right? Um, and that's really hard to sell to the community. You know, so you, you have, how many, how many businesses has Forward brought in in the last decade, is it fifteen, maybe?
I don't know if it's that, anybody, I mean, between helping and, and bringing in businesses.
Right, I mean, I mean.
I would say at least, I mean, there's a lot of businesses that are helped, I mean, a lot of childcare work, things like that, they're vitally important, they get overlooked.
But the, but the problem is that the community never forgets or forgives the one, the one that had that.
Yeah, when you make a mistake.
And it's like, well, look, of the things that you're funding, the expectation should be that they fail, right? It's the ones that are gonna make it, that are gonna make so much wealth for the community that should offset.
Yeah, anyway, that's another question, I'm done.
Anything else?
No, sorry, I'll break it off.
Oh, and that's, that's fine, um, let's see, Airport, and we met, and projects are being completed, and passengers' numbers are increasing, I think we were four passengers shy of our twenty-nineteen uh May or April, I think it was May. But a- anyway, we were four shy, month before that, we were ahead of our twenty-nineteen, uh, twenty-twenty was kind of a, a loss uh for a lot of passenger type of services, so uh we don't wanna forget about it, but we certainly, certainly don't want to take those numbers and try to compare apples to apples kind of thing, so we've been using twenty-nineteen numbers, and those are looking good. Chamber met a week ago, they also had an open house on uh Wednesday, I believe it was, uh, served hamburgers, hot dogs, and invited people to come on out and see the Chamber facilities, uh motor vehicle license, uh where they're give out tabs and license plates and different things like that. They do have one of those new kiosks in their building, uh, so if you wanna go in and don't have, wanna wait in line, you can punch in your, and get your tabs right out of the, the kiosk machine. Yeah, so, um, people just need to get acclimated to using it, the day we came out of our meeting, I think there were six or seven people standing in line, and one was actually leaning up against the kiosk machine as a piece of furniture. And so when you have just a one, one person in the office, it, it takes a while to run through some of those, some of those things, and, uh, but that's a way to get people in and out of that facility a little quicker if they utilize that machine, that Department of Transportation has put in a lot of, a lot of different areas, so. Speaking of committees, the uh Devil's Lake Outlet Advisory Committee, uh, my term on that is, is expiring at the end of the month. Uh, that is an appointed position by the governor, uh, anybody interested in applying for that? Ken, we have no say on who sits on that representing Ramsey County, or Devil's Lake Basin, or anything like that. Um, and it's made up of seventeen board members, and I think they were supposed to be staggered, somehow they didn't get that done that way, and so there's like thirteen of them that are, um, could be up for reappointment this end of June, so. Our water tour, all the commissioners are invited to that, it's uh June sixteenth, we'll be touring around the Devil's Lake Basin, uh, starting off at the Hofstadt Precision A Educational Center at Lake Michigan State College, and moving on from there. Kind of a, a conflict in days, because that's the same day as our Law Enforcement Center Board meeting, and uh something that we may have to look at changing in future years, because I know there's a lot of commissioners that sit on that, that board that would potentially like to attend, so. Um, but that should be a, a good, good meeting on the sixteenth with Law Enforcement Center, I think they'd have a D O C R coming in for inspections that week, don't they yet?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're supposed to get a report uh from Department of Corrections on the Law Enforcement Center on our sixteenth meeting, but if anybody wants to attend our water tour, that's an all-day deal, uh, leave at the morning at the college, and uh travel around and look at areas throughout the Devil's Lake Basin, and arrive back by five o'clock that evening. Other than that, uh, no further announcements, I think, uh, last week, I think we had, for first time in a long, long time, we had zero active cases of COVID in the county, so.
Woo-hoo.
And, yeah.
Gay vaccine.
Yeah. North Dakota State, uh, Fire and tornado.
Fire and tornado. The reasonable.
Yeah, I saw that.
Um.
Yeah, Jack in the Rain, I saw that.
Well.
Did, did we, did we have a claim we didn't know about, or what?
No, no, um, we, sometime this, in the next week and a half or two weeks, um, we're going to have an underwriter come out, and he's going to inspect our buildings, on the, everything, which I don't know that I ever remembering, but coming in doing that.
Nope, this is the first.
Yeah, yeah, um.
Yeah, I said.
You know, um, and we're like, I mean, we, even, even with the fourteen percent increase, there's, I still budgeted it up.
Five thirty?
Mm-hmm. We paid seventy-three hundred last year.
Yeah, four, fourteen.
Fourteen percent.
And that's for, for everything building, right?
That's everything, that includes the boiler, that in, I mean.
I still think it's a pretty reasonable cost when it comes down to it, even if it is fourteen, I mean, I, I don't like seeing fourteen percent, but, you know.
You still.
If you get, if you get us over, they're gonna jump the premium.
Yeah, that's right. Genius.
Damn it, I have a foot in the last.
We don't want the big coverage anymore, give us, give us back the silver level.
Yeah, just so that everybody is aware of that, so. Rising reinsurance costs is what their explanation is.
I don't buy it.
They've cut an extra fourteen percent.
Yeah.
I think over the weekend, the uh asbestos crew was here to dismantle the historical room. Ron, did you notice that this morning, have you been downstairs?
Well, I had to leave, and I was coming back for the budget meeting, but I missed it, but yeah, it looks good, I mean, it's done.
Yeah.
I mean, the hole is cut.
Yeah, the, the hole's done, so.
Being a door now.
So now the contractor will be in and be able to get that taken care of, so we'll have access to that, that visitation room without having to disrupt a meeting going on in the historical room. Yep, it'll be a really good, good addition, um, other than that.
Motion for adjournment?
Second.
You got something on the budget, Ron, or?
No, I just was curious about the discussion, so, no, I don't have anything.
We're giving discuss, uh, departments a direction to.
Where to go with wages.
And where to go with wages, percent increase, and a cola.
Okay, I was just interested in updating technology and meeting rooms, so that we could do Teams meetings and chat everyone.
Something we should talk about, yeah.
And sound system.
Technology.
Well, and, and that is certainly one of the things that we can discuss with that, um, the COVID dollars is, is, there's very limited uh ways to spend that, and one of the things that we don't want to do is spend it on something that we're not able to do, and then have to come back and put that bill on our tax payer, so.
Yeah, get, get approval previously, just cut checks.
So we're really gonna have to uh dive into that and see what we can intent before we actually agree on, on taking the money and spending it, so. Because there are some, some hurdles to jump through to even access it, that a lot of auditors within the state are uncomfortable with, because it has to, they have input their personal, personal data.
My driver's license, my social security number.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, we have a taxpayer E I N number for the county, why wouldn't we just use the E I N number?
We do, and, and that's something they still require.
They don't want us to do it.
Yeah.
We, a lot, a lot of them have, they want to do this too. Kind of, you know.
Don't like, nah, give it to.
Board members, no, I didn't.
Nah, they can take one of them.
Not, not FEMA, but Medicaid, to get, to be a Medicaid provider, they wanted all the board numbers, such as street numbers, driver's license, so I, we got it down to the director to do it, so, for Medicaid, to, to get reverse for Medicaid.
Yeah, so.
So I think, I think we need to put together a list, find out if it's acceptable, approval, before even going that far, because that's kind of where a lot, a majority of state auditors, state auditors, auditors are going to see if, you know, anything on their wish list even is qualified before going through all of that.
So.
It's an honor to have I've been along with it, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
This, this is what, what we got, that Legislative Council is kind of a condensed version of it, but it's, yeah, a hundred and twenty-five pages long of, of guidelines on what you can, can.
A hundred, hundred and twenty-five pages?
Yeah.
Oh my.
Yeah.
Better, better get the lawyer involved.
Well, great, so, um, but we do have a, a motion to adjourn, and so with that.